Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, June 11th, 2014. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square here in lovely Salem, Oregon. And we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are beginning our meeting an hour before we usually do today because we have a funeral that a few of us are wanting to go to that starts at 10:00. So we'll be taking things a little bit out of our normal order today. We have a presentation, but it will be coming up around 9:00 o'clock. And then we have a notice public hearing at 9:30. So we'll begin our meeting with public comment. There is not anyone signed up for public comment. So we'll move right into our consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar as presented today on June 11th, 2014. First item on it is the Board of Commissioners to approve an order adopting revised administrative policy number 208 in relation to immigration and customs enforcement. Second item is community services approve an order appointing Cindy Astley to the Marion County Children and Families Commission to a term ending January 31st, 2018. Next item is under finance approve an access agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality to enter county-owned property located at 140 Palmer Street, Mount Angel. Next item is under health approve an order adopting the revised health department fee schedule for fiscal year 2014-15. Next item is under public works approve an order reappointing Darby Randcliff to the Marion County Solid Waste Management Advisory Council for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2018. Still under public works approve a resolution initiating consideration of amendments to Marion County Code Chapters 16.19 and 17.178, the floodplain overlay zones. Under public works schedule a public hearing for June 25th, 2014 to consider mass gathering application MG14-001 White Wind Productions LLC Clerk's File Number 5685. Next item under public works notice of a bid award up to the amount of $586,540 to albina asphalt for furnishing and application of emincedified oils and liquid asphalt on various Marion County roads. Next item under the Sheriff's Office approve amendment seven to add $450,000 to the intergovernmental agreement with the Bureau of Indian Affairs to provide law enforcement and juvenile detention services at the Chumawa Indian School.
So I will second the motion. Any of those items you want to discuss or questions?
I think we had an opportunity to discuss them in our management update.
All right. So we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is approved. Now we will move to our action items. Under Board of Commissioners, the first item is to consider approval of an order appointing Samuel Brentano as Chair, Janet Carlson as Vice Chair, and Kevin Cameron a second Vice Chair of the Marion County Board of Commissioners effective the first Monday of January, until the first Monday of January 2015. That's an important word, isn't it? With attached committee assignments. And Gloria Roy, your name is on this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. State statute requires that the Board of Commissioners appoint a Chair and a Vice Chair. Previously Commissioner Patty Milne was the Vice Chair. We generally rotate through and Commissioner Brentano was the Chair. With her resignation, we now have a hole in a Vice Chair. And so it's necessary under state statute to at least reappoint a Vice Chair. Now Marion County also designates a second Vice Chair so that in the case of needing to get something done, like have a plat signed or something like that, we have a designated Commissioner. We've got the order that's specified and the authority granted to do that. So this particular order would reaffirm that Commissioner Brentano is currently the Chair for this calendar year. And it would move Commissioner Carlson from the second Vice Chair to the Vice Chair slot. And Commissioner Cameron would then be the second Vice Chair for this calendar year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or attempt to answer them.
This is Commissioner Cameron's first official board meeting.
Right.
So I want to welcome him here. And we have a long list of committee assignments that are attached to this. My understanding is that for insurance purposes, we want to document all of the various assignments that we have. But also it provided, excuse me, an opportunity for us last week, I think the very same day you were sworn in, to walk through these assignments, to look at the assignments that Commissioner Milne has held to divvy up and figure out who's going to cover what assignment. We've done a little bit of readjustments on these assignments. I think I'm pretty excited about it. So I think this will be a good thing as we move forward this year, working together.
Yeah, it was a good discussion that we had to rearrange those. And I'm honored to be able to serve this interim position in place of Commissioner Milne. To be the second Vice Chair was the appropriate place for me to be. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Well, you're welcome. You were offered the other one.
I, yeah.
But that's good. So the other thing that I would mention, and we generally, well, we said this, we say this every year, and we generally say it in January when we do these new assignments, is that being the Chair of the Board in Marion County is a bit different than being the Chair of a committee in the legislature. Where in the legislature, the committee chair has kind of special authority to be able to decide what moves forward and what doesn't move forward and, you know, how things get moved through the legislative process. The Board Chair is more of an administrative role. Certainly, the Board Chair is responsible for chairing the meetings. And they get the mail first. I always mention that. So sometimes there's a little bit of organization there in figuring out what needs to go where, kind of triaging. They are generally the key spokesperson to the media for the year that they are Chair. They sign certain documents as the Chair that the full Board doesn't sign when there's just a Chair signature required. And that's an opportunity for, if the Chair has a special kind of project or something that they want to do, like the year that I was Chair, I know we did strategic planning, those types of things. But it's much, we work together because there's just three of us in a much more, I think, collegial way than you might in a broader body where you have to have structure and majorities make a difference.
Trying to get one of my bills heard.
Right, exactly. So with that, if you want to make a motion to approve the order.
So make a motion to approve the order of the Board of Commissioners to consider approval of an order appointing Sam Brentano as Chair, Janet Carlson as Vice Chair, and Kevin Cameron as second Vice Chair of the Marion County Board of Commissioners effective until the first Monday of January 2015 with the attached committee assignments.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That motion is approved. Under health, consider approval of an ordinance amending the ambulance service area plan by emergency procedure. And we have Rod Culkins and you have some ambulance people with you that I know you will introduce.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you know, counties regulate ambulance services in Oregon. And we do that through an ordinance and an ambulance service area plan. We have a number of ambulance service areas in Marion County. And we last reviewed this issue in spring of 2012. I'm here today to ask for approval of an ordinance that would amend the ambulance service area plan that was last approved in 2012. Why we need to do that is that that ambulance service area plan contained a map as its, as an appendix that showed the city limits of all cities within Marion County and showed the ambulance service area boundaries. And these are not the same thing. So it's a fairly complicated cluttered map. It's also on an eight and a half by 11. And it's very hard to see any changes to the boundaries from what the map that you looked at in 2012 looked like. But the ambulance service area boundaries are described in great detail in a very complicated fashion down to the level of a tax lot. And the reason that's necessary is so that the right ambulance will get dispatched to the right tax lot. And so that when dispatch gets a 911 call and somebody needs emergency medical services, the right ambulance service area is notified and sends an ambulance. What we did in 2012 was not to change those boundaries, but to spend a lot of time making sure we have the verbal descriptions of the boundaries correct. Then those verbal descriptions are translated into a series of maps. And that map data through GIS or Global Information System is loaded into the dispatch center's dispatching database. So what happened was that there was an error between the verbal descriptions of the boundary that were approved at that time are correct. There have been no changes in the boundary. And actually, there hasn't been any change in dispatching because we've been waiting on some software upgrades, I believe, at Salem Dispatch Center. What has come up with those upgrades are done. The GIS data is ready to be loaded into the system to make sure that the dispatching matches our description. And what we found at that time in reviewing the maps once again was that there was discrepancy between a couple areas of the map and the verbal description. So what this ordinance would do would amend the map data to match the verbal description that we brought before you in 2012. And so it would have the correct data that would go into the dispatch center database. And then the ambulances would be dispatched appropriately when called. The areas of difference occurred between ambulance service area one, which is operated by the City of Salem Fire Department, and Marion County Fire District Number One. And so these gentlemen represent each of those ambulance service areas. And I'll have them say a few words in a second. So what we're asking to do is an ordinance, approval of an ordinance to amend the plan, which then serves as an attachment to our original ordinance that establishes the Marion County ambulance service areas. And that's just to make this correct and to correct the map errors that came forward. And with me today.
Steve? Good morning, Commissioner Carlson, Commissioner Cameron. Gloria, good to see you all. I'm Steve Brown. I'm the Deputy Chief of Training and EMS for the City of Salem Fire Department. Along with B.C. Weinman and others from the surrounding ASAs, we spent a great amount of time making sure these were all correct in the verbal descriptions as Rod described. When the discrepancies were noted, we got together, went back, compared our notes. The City of Salem has no issue with these changes. We believe it's correct as to the original intent of the ASA plan. And I think there's been a lot of work put forward to this. And we're happy with the outcome. We'd just like to get this one finalized so that WVCC can get the correct GIS into the CAD system and we'll all be sent to the right places on the right times. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson, Commissioner Cameron, good morning. Patrick Weinman, I'm the EMS Chief with Marion County Fire District. I've also reviewed the information on the map data with Mr. Culkins. And I agree, information is current as it's reflected in the amendment, and we would support moving it forward as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
No, just an observation. It was perfect timing. I got to spend Friday night in the fire station out on Corden Road and got a very good education on the differences between where the fire engines would respond to versus the medic units. And so it was a perfect timing to have that experience in reality and then come and get this update on Monday and today. So thank you for your service and the hard work that you do to keep us all safe, both at Salem Fire and Marion County District One. So, thank you.
I'm just going to walk back about 12 years. So the first issue that I was ever lobbied quote unquote on prior to taking office as a county commissioner was the boundary in East Salem between Marion County Fire District One and Salem, City of Salem. And it was pretty intense. And I know that the Ambulance Advisory Committee has worked over the last number of years with Rod's assistance and also Sean Baird as the leader of that to work out some of these differences. And so the plan that was presented to us in 2012, I think everybody agreed to. It was done amicably. And I just wanted, in the background with that, we go through it every five years, is that right, Rod?
Every five years, yeah.
Right. To readjust the boundaries, to take a look at who ought to be doing what. So this is really a technical fix mid-plan cycle to fix some errors. And I was maybe missed the part about, so how did these discrepancies come up? I mean, and how were, and I guess, how were you dealing with it before the discrepancies came up? Was it, were there some properties within the discrepancy area that brought it to light? Or what was it that caused that to be noticed by you?
I think what brought this to light was the upgrade is finally done at the dispatch center. We're going to load the map data, the new map data in. And everybody was doing a review of the map to make sure it matched kind of what our understanding had been. Since we didn't change the boundary the last time, I think, and you guys could confirm this, is that there wasn't a change in the dispatching. And we were just waiting for the upgrade to get done. How this came to light is a little different from how it was created. And how the discrepancy was created, as I said, the verbal description reads something like runs north along the east tax lot of tax lot number 1872 to the road midline and goes east. It's very easy to confuse some areas. And we had some confusion around whether it was the east side of a road at one point or the east property lines of the properties to the east side of that road. And so the text description, the narrative description of these boundaries, very dense, impossible to punctuate, and it takes several readings actually to get it right. And we made some mistakes in translating those into maps in a couple of areas. And we've now corrected those. And I think we've reviewed them and I think we've got them right.
Okay. Very good.
Commissioner Carlson, if I may, I appreciate your long memory and history of everything that's gone on. Basically, what we discovered was there's particular areas that both agencies are very familiar with on the east side of town. And in running these tests, we would find that we were expecting one ambulance to be dispatched and another was dispatched. So we started having conversations. And that's when we started looking more into the maps. And as you said, this is not the five-year, the last one that was done, and it was very amicable. I will say that the City of Salem still would love at some point the opportunity to look at adjusting those boundaries to match our city limits. So fire matches ambulance. But at this time, we're, you know, it was very amicable. We worked very well with all the other agencies. There was areas where Patrick and I sat down and looked house by house what made sense. I mean, coming from this station or this station, which agency would more likely to be there quicker? And rather than having streets divided where during down the middle of the road, you'd have one agency on one side of the street and another on the other, that's why we chose to go on the back property lines. So one entire street. If it made sense for that agency to be there, why would they only have half the street? And so we tried to do things that made sense for the citizens. I mean, that's ultimately our goal is to provide the best coverage, the quickest response to all the citizens of Marion County.
Great. Thank you for that. Any additional questions? So we are doing this by emergency procedure. So the first motion would be to move that the Chair read this ordinance by title only twice.
So move that the Chair would read the ordinance under consideration by title twice.
And I would second the motion. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye. All right. So I will read this by title only twice. An ordinance amending the ambulance service area plan and declaring an emergency. An ordinance amending the ambulance service area plan and declaring an emergency. And we now will move the full ordinance.
So I'll move the consideration of approval of an ordinance amending the ambulance service area plan by emergency procedure.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And it is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate your good work.
Thanks for your service.
So I think we're going to take just a little break right now. And we'll be back probably in about 10 minutes.
Right. Good morning. I didn't get the message or it didn't sink in that we were starting at 8:00. I apologize to everybody. We need to move right ahead. So our next item is under public works, consider approval of amendment 13 to the current contract with Covanta Marion Incorporated to reduce annual medical waste tonnage requirements accepted at the waste energy facility. Jeff Bickford is here. And do you want to just go ahead and start?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Bickford. I'm the Environmental Services Division Manager for Public Works. And Alan Haley regrets that he was unable to make it here today. He had a schedule conflict, so. A little background about what this is about. Marion County actually began accepting infectious medical waste at the waste energy facility in Brooks back in 1989. And that was really in order to provide for the safe disposal of that material as per the state's at that time new medical waste rules. So again, combustion is actually DEQ's preferred method of disposal for certain infectious waste items such as pathological waste as well as cultures and stocks as the combustion at 2,000 or so degrees Fahrenheit kills the bacteria that are the actual health concern. So just as I had to note, the medical waste program is actually contracted as far as with the haulers that provide this material, is contracted for, with Marion County to perform that function. So during the mid-1990s, acting upon a recommendation from our Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, the Board of Commissioners set a limit of 1,500 tons per year that would be allowable for out-of-county infectious medical waste to be processed here at that facility. This is exclusive of the material that's actually produced here in Marion County by our local hospitals and health clinics. Our existing agreement with Covanta Energy, who actually owns and operates the waste energy facility, states that if Marion County fails to provide at least 1,000 tons of out-of-county boxed infectious medical waste per contract year to that facility for processing, the Covanta may choose to terminate its obligation to accept this material under the agreement with a 60-day written notice to the county. So the current agreement runs through September of this year. So we're almost at the end of that particular agreement. So the termination of the acceptance of medical waste at the facility would be detrimental to our franchise haulers that need, have a need for disposal of infectious medical waste. The facility can provide that service as well as to the other out-of-county customers that utilize this disposal opportunity. Again, there's not very many options in the Northwest for the disposal of infectious medical waste. However, as you are aware, the county is, now has a specific exclusion where we are distinctly making sure that we do not receive human fetal tissue at our facility for, in this infectious medical waste. So the loads, there was a concern with that exclusion. And we also no longer accept material from Stericycle Canada, which was coming out of British Columbia Vancouver area. There was some concern that the county may not be able to meet their contractual requirement. And the concern being that Covanta may opt to choose, if we were to fall below that level, opt to choose to terminate that program. So discussions ensued with Covanta, and they were agreeable to dropping this minimum obligation from 1,000 tons per year to a new value of 300 ton per year for out-of-county medical waste. So the amendment, that's the amendment number 13 that you see before you today. Any questions?
Jeff, I do. So what's the difference between the two items we're looking at today? One has 1,000 and one has 700. Was that an inconsistency or am I missing something?
No, you know, I see it's not an inconsistency. What it is, is we have, this is, amendment number 13 is for our current existing contract. The other item that's on the agenda is just amendment number one to the, our renegotiated new agreement, which will actually, won't kick in until September.
That's right. I get it. But I do have, so remind me, or are there, what's, are there maximum limits imposed in the contract or just by our own policies?
It is by your own policies.
And that number is what?
1,500 tons per year.
And what is the average coming in today?
For our calendar year 2013, we were at 1,500.
And so since like this month, last month, what will that number look like?
Well, you know, I'll go back to, for a full calendar year, for 2013, actually Stericycle Canada provided almost 500 tons of that 1,500. So about a third of it, if you looked on a yearly basis, potentially would not be there. Now that being said, we have been approached by another company that has an interest, actually from California this time. So some of that may actually end up being substituted from in the U.S. sources.
And just because I'm talking a little off the subject that I've been meaning to call you, so, one of the things that we talked about doing is some type of review audit. I have met with the collectors and they say everything's fine, but we're certainly operating on the trust basis. And I'm not pointing this at the collector certainly, but for all customers. So it seems to me that we need more of a manifest ability to random look and ability to hire somebody to take that observation and make sure what's being promised is what's there.
Yes, actually, as a matter of fact, as soon as I get out of this meeting, I have a meeting with Camber upstairs. There is a draft request for proposals for a contractor to, that would do a random inspection of loads as they come in, pull those aside, take them to an offsite location, investigate the contents and for compliance with what we're asking.
I know it's gross, but it's the only way I can think of to make sure what we're asking happens. Again, back to collectors, had lots of cooperation, everything seems good, but I want to make sure that that's the case. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I do have just a comment. First of all, this is another piece of the larger puzzle that we worked on. And when all of this came to light around the possibility, because we're not, we're not, we were not ever sure whether the human fetal tissue was in that medical waste. We were told by one party that it was and other parties that it wasn't. But in order to assure that it will not be there, we wanted to put together a process where there are, what do we call them? What do...
Certifications.
Certifications, thank you. So each of the haulers and each of the generators certify that there is no human fetal tissue in the medical waste they're providing. And then there will be a process of inspection, like we talked about, that was part of it. And then the other, and we've redone contracts and put language in contracts, we've redone our ordinance, put definitions and changed the ordinance. And now we're at the place where we're reducing the minimum amount of medical waste tonnage that's required by each of the contracts, the current contract that's ending in the end of August, right?
September.
The end of September. Well, this says it's effective September 1, the new contract. Is that not correct? Anyway, while Gloria is looking that up, this is September 20th is the date on here. September 19th, 2017. So then this one is, does it have a cover sheet on it? Anyway, whatever the date is, around September, the new contract will come into play. Now, the language here talks about lowering the minimum will ensure that the program remains available for use by the customers. And I know the, it's ironic a bit because we had the opposite concerns back in 2005, I think it was, when the Solid Waste Advisory Council, Solid Waste Management Advisory Council recommended that we lift the maximum from 1,500 to a higher number. And at that time, there was a lot of flurry of objections and I think it was almost a year and SWAMAC held public hearings and received testimony and the board received emails and testimony and after all was said and done, we went back to the 1,500 because we were still quite a ways under that cap. The concern at that time was plastics burning, what the emissions would be and, and the medical waste was tubes and Sharps and those types of things and what that would mean for the waste stream. This is an entirely different issue. But my, the way that I read the contract is that if we don't provide the minimum amount, then basically that section of the contract is null and void. Under our, my question is, under our flow control, do we still control the flow of medical waste or would Covanta be able then, since there was no minimum or maximum or whatever, would they be able to, to just handle the medical waste program as they chose? Gloria.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, our flow control is within Marion County, so what it would do is it would allow them to accept medical waste without the top limitation from outside of the county. And so keeping that provision in gives us both a minimum guaranteed as well as a maximum. So that's where that provision is important in the contract for this particular program.
Right. So, and that was my understanding. So while the write-up here talks about, well, if we didn't get enough medical waste, then the program would go away, there wouldn't be any program for anybody. It's also possible that the, it would go away for Marion County, but it, but it's also possible that we would have this huge inundation of medical waste and have no ability for our county to really manage that.
That is correct.
Okay.
I had one other comment that I've been forgetting about on the subject of the audits. What we haven't really discussed, and I'd like Gloria and Jeff to, all of us to think about, is, is there has to be some consequence if materials found and I just don't think we've discussed it. And it's tricky because you, my first guess would be I'd like to just then exclude that generator from, from further service, but that brings up all sorts of questions, what they do with their remaining acceptable material. But I could also see that it's going to cause, if, if this happens and some's discovered under these audits, that there is a cost to the county. A whole system will take a shock and we'll be back at what to do with the material, just all sorts of, so I can think of a financial cost to the county if that happens too. So would you give that some thought and maybe we can discuss it sometime? Anything else? Kevin?
Thank you Commissioner. I was having the same thought, is what are the consequences? Has there been any kind of consequences if somebody does violate the contract?
I could, I think, well Gloria knows, I think the current ordinance says that if they violate it, we don't do business with them anymore, right? Is that?
That, that's correct.
That there's no.
We have, in addition to the request for proposals for the auditing services, we've also been revising the boilerplate for the infectious waste haulers. And that's where we're picking up, because our contract, you know, is with the haulers. So we can make the haulers exclude the generators, but then what do you do with it? It's the same thing with the audit services in terms of what do you do if you find something? So there are still pieces that we're working through that will be decision points. We've talked about liquidated damages if something is found, but then you have to say, well, is it the generator or is it the hauler? And how do you, how do you get at that?
They're the ones that knowingly.
Unless, for example, a hauler neglected to get the certifications. So you have to say, who was the responsible party in the particular situation and how do you get at those generators when you're not in contractual privy with them, other than excluding them from future business such as Stericycle Canada?
It's a bit off the subject, but I do want to be thinking about and come up with some.
It's a, it's a very complex situation with a lot of parts. This is one particular piece of that part.
All right. Anything else on the matters before us then? Then if someone would make a motion, starting with the first?
I will go ahead and make the motion since Commissioner Cameron's been making a lot of motions this morning.
Oh, good.
Trial by fire here. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of amendment number 13 to the current contract with Covanta Marion Inc. to reduce annual medical waste tonnage requirements accepted at the waste energy facility.
It's moved and seconded to approve amendment 13 to the current contract with Covanta. Further discussion? I don't hear any. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next matter is closely related. I don't know if we need any more questions. If there are, certainly go ahead. And if not?
Well, and Mr. Chair, before I make the motion, what, should I use the effective date of September?
The effective date would be September 20th.
I believe it's the 20th, yes.
Right, okay. So we'll fix that. So the contract is right, it's just the agenda needs the adjustment. So, well, I would move approval of amendment number one to the new contract with Covanta Marion Inc. effective September 20th, 2014, to reduce annual medical waste tonnage requirements accepted at the waste energy facility.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to approve amendment number one to the new contract effective September 20th, 2014. Anything further? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Thanks Jeff.
Thank you.
Gloria.
Allison is here.
And if she's, are you ready to go? Well then come on up or over to there. We have a presentation from Grow North Saniam Canyon Economic Development Corporation, their annual report. Allison McKenzie and Kelly Schreiber are here. Probably followed me down Highway 22.
Is this positioned well enough that you can hear us?
Closer is always better.
Closer is better, okay. We'll be happy to do that. Thank you so much for having us this morning. It's always fun for us to come and report on what we've been working on in the canyon and the support from the Marion County Commissioners is so important to us. So thank you for supporting the work that we do and taking a special interest in our part of the county. Not all commissioners would do that in other counties and we really appreciate that here. I'm Allison McKenzie, I'm the executive director of Grow EDC and the entrepreneurial coach for our clients. And what I thought would be most interesting this morning would be for you to hear from a couple of our clients, this time on the west end of our territory. Last time we had you meet a couple of clients up in Gates and Lyons. So this time I'm bringing you a client from Sublimity and another one from Staton. You all had a little short report that had some numbers on it for you to consider for a meeting today. I'll just hit a couple of highlights that may not have, that may not have been included in that report, just so you have them. Then I'm going to turn it over to Larry and Kelly Schreiber from the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce and Larry Etzel from Marcy's Place, who will tell you about their businesses and how Grow has helped them. So, one of the things that we found most interesting in the last 11 months since we've been tracking it, we've had 2,338 client contacts. We work with our clients one-on-one, we work with them by phone and we work with them by email and also in a classroom setting. We've had 144 people go through our classes. By far, our most popular class is Small Steps, Big Results, a class that we started in our last grant cycle and both Kelly and Larry have been participants in that and I'll let them speak about their experience there. Since I gave you the summary last week, we now have 351 clients that we've been working with. We've had three new clients this week. We've, we have 111 people who are businesses that have opened in some fashion or organizations that have opened in some fashion since we started in October of 2008. We have another 20 who are prepared to launch. Some of these folks are on hold. We have 57 businesses that are on hold right now and a few people have abandoned their projects completely, about 14 of those. This is all in the annual report that I've emailed to Dawn, so you get all of these details in that report. We've helped retain 60 local businesses. We've offered a quick tune-up to 26. That could range on any number of topics. Recently, it's been mostly on staffing issues that people have had and wanted help with. We've helped or participated in or are helping right now with 21 sales or acquisitions. More people are coming to us now who are ready to get out of their business and want a little bit of help in figuring out how to sell it most effectively. We've helped 19 businesses with expansions, five with diversifications and I think that adds up to about 351. If I've forgotten anything, you'll see it in the report. If, if time allows, we can talk a little bit more about some of the new initiatives we have with the KIVIZIP 0% loan program or with the Young Professionals Group or some of the rural revitalization research that we're doing and projects we're looking at implementing in the next 12 months. But right now, I think what I'd like for you to do is get to hear from clients on the ground and see what it's like to work with Grow and their experiences. So first we have Larry Etzel, he's a resident of Sublimity, some of you may know Larry already, and he recently opened a business called Marcy's Place and I'll let him tell you about that.
Good morning Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. A little bit about my background, I grew up in the Staton area. After high school, I went to Oregon State, eventually went into the military, did a 30 year military service back on the east coast with the Air Force and the Air Force Reserves. When I retired in '05, I moved back to help manage the family farm and ultimately I ended up taking over my mom's healthcare. She was bedridden for her last three years and I realized how important it was to have good care for the elderly. Two years ago, I opened Marcy's Place. It's an adult foster care home in memory of my mom. We opened up last July. My Air Force career really didn't prepare me much for opening a business and about six months ago, through the Chamber of Commerce, I was introduced to Allison and Grow EDC. And Allison has been a huge part of my, helping me focusing, helping me focus my marketing and best utilize my marketing monies to get it focused where I really need to get it. Allison has taken me from my original marketing flyer, which was just a sheet of paper with some pictures on it. She helped me find a photographer and now we've got, you know, much more professional flyer with very targeted bullet points. Allison got her whole EDC group of 20 people to look over this card before we printed it. She found me a photographer through her Small Steps, Great Rewards forum. And starting a business, you can make a lot of wrong turns. Allison has been here to help me minimize the number of wrong turns that I've taken. She's very pointed. If she says you're doing something wrong, she is, she is very direct and tells you, you shouldn't be doing that or you should be doing this. Some of the things she suggested I didn't necessarily agree with, but I followed her direction and they've worked out. So I'm a big fan of Allison and her organization, the Grow EDC up there, up in the, up in the canyon. And I can't say enough about the support that she's given me. I look forward to continuing to, to work with her and watching my business grow and succeed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to add a little bit about that and that is that what we did for Larry, we don't usually get really involved in a marketing piece. That's not usually, we don't usually get down to that much detail. But what we found when we first started talking with Larry is that the, the quality and, the quality level of the facility that he has was not really exemplified in the marketing pieces that he had. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there. So we did a mini brainstorming session for him with some people that he knew and some of our resource board members to brainstorm on what kinds of things would really need to be in a piece to reach his target audience. Then we had our whole resource board look at the first iteration of it and that's where this piece came from. When you go through that process, it's not just about creating a marketing piece, it's about being more focused in how you're marketing yourselves and how to express the value that you bring to a customer and be able to target them more effectively. So that's what that process is really about. Most clients, we don't give pointed advice to. Larry is one of those who is able to listen to that. And we incorporated what Larry wanted with what was most effective. Ultimately, it's the client's decision about what they want to do. So now I'm going to turn this over to Kelly Schreiber. Kelly is the Executive Director of the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce. Unlike many of our counterparts around the world, we decided early on to work with nonprofits, governments and other organizations or any group working on a special project. And we do a lot of things with the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce and Kelly's also a participant in our Small Steps, Big Results class.
Good morning Commissioners. So I've been the Executive Director at the State and Sublimity Chamber for five years now. And Allison walked into our office when I was very new to be an Executive Director. I didn't have experience with chambers, I came from a teaching background instead. Sometimes that's great preparation though, for chamber work. So in ways that Allison has helped us as an organization, I'll speak to that first. Been very instrumental in working with our board to be very strategic about who we invite to serve on our board. Used to be it was kind of like whoever fogged a mirror and said yes. And we've really changed our tactic now, thanks to Allison's coaching on making sure we have people on our board that love the product of chamber membership, also have financial background or they love marketing. And thank goodness, I didn't have to do all three. So what a relief that was. You just make sure you have the proper skillset on your board and it really has changed the direction of our chamber. We've been able to focus more on meeting the needs of local businesses. That has been very crucial through the recession. I tell people quite often when I'm referring Allison to people, especially that are walking into our office for the first time wanting to know, how do I start a business? What do I do? Where do I go? I don't know what our communities of Staton and Sublimity would have done during the recession if it weren't for Allison's assistance with businesses. She has helped us with multiple board retreats. We now have a strategic plan in place. She's met with committees to help retool different kinds of events that we have done and to refresh and that's been a great benefit also. We've used Allison on numerous occasions to do workshops for us based on needs that our businesses have said they've had. And because Allison is offering her services to both of our communities, most of our workshops we offer for like five bucks for attendance. So it's been very low cost, which also helps our local businesses. I do attend the Small Steps, Big Results class, both with my chamber hat on and also I'm a business owner myself, so those have been very crucial in keeping that energy and the momentum going by having classes. And just what it's done for our community with the businesses has just been immeasurable. It's hard to express, you know, the gratitude for that when you see, as a Chamber of Commerce Director, we always love it when a new business puts out their shingle that they're open. But what's very disappointing is some of them within a year are closed if they don't have the right background in place to make sure they have all those three legs of a successful business with the financial, the marketing and the product. So I think with Allison's assistance with those businesses early on, not only do we have the excitement of them putting their shingle out for have the excitement of them putting their shingle out for the first time, but in a year, we're still celebrating with them as they celebrate an anniversary.
Thank you, Kelly. There are a couple other numbers that I forgot in my original run-through, some numbers that are important, and some of them are not always good news. We've had 18 businesses close since we started this program, and they tend to close for three reasons. One is inadequate management structure. That's what we coach people on, and I can tell you every single client we have who sets up a management structure in the way that we suggest is doing well, all of them, whether it's a nonprofit organization or a business. So some close for that. Others have closed actually fairly recently for family or health reasons. Microenterprises, most of our clients are microenterprises with five or fewer employees. So the personal life of the entrepreneur greatly impacts their business. So sometimes it's just not sustainable if, if a spouse or child is ill, or you need to care for elderly parents, or your husband takes a new job. Some of those kinds of things can impact a business. And the third reason is some people have chosen to go back into the workforce. There have been more opportunities available recently. So of those 18, it's split about a third, a third, a third for those reasons. I also took a look at our job numbers to give you some ideas about what we've done there as well. We're not about job creation, but jobs are inevitably created when you open a business. And there's a lot of flux in this. So these are full and part-time jobs aggregated. 169 new jobs and 193 jobs that we've helped retain. Those numbers are a little bit higher than they were last year, but they remain relatively flat as we have people going in and out of their businesses and retooling their staffing based on more realistic needs of what they, what they really are needing. So we have other projects we're working on. We're glad to talk with you about that. Do you have questions that you would, you'd like to ask us, or anything you'd like to weigh in on?
Well, do you want me to start?
Please.
Okay, so we have a little time, and I want to back up and maybe for those listening, and we have a new Commissioner here, give a little bit of background and context here. So could you give us succinctly, how did this organization begin? When did you begin? Why did you begin? And I was actually, I think Sam and I both went out to a big meeting that they had out in Staton at the Community Center when this was just an idea. So can you give us a little bit of an overview on that?
Yes. Grow North Saniam is a program of the North Saniam Canyon Economic Development Corporation, also known now as Grow EDC, that was formed in 1996. And back in 2006, 2007, the organization started researching projects that could have a big economic impact on the area. And the, the program that they chose was an enterprise, enterprise facilitation program that involves free one-on-one coaching to businesses. That launched, I came on board in September of 2008, and that launched officially in October of 2008.
And wasn't that modeled after something that had been done elsewhere in the United States?
Yes, it was modeled after a program designed by a guy named Ernesto Soroli of the Soroli Institute. We keep the basics of that model, some of the systemic things related to organizations. We've, we've retooled that work more effectively for us and for our region. But it's also very similar, if you ever read any books by Peter Drucker, who's kind of the, the father of management theory. The idea is to double down on your strengths instead of trying to shore up your weaknesses. So we work with people to help them figure out what they do best in a business, and then we help them find other people who can help them in their business who have strengths that they don't have. And, and we, we do this all day long, and Kelly's done it a lot now that she can, she can do it as well as I can, which is wonderful. That's what we want. We want people to be able to talk in that language.
So second question is, you mentioned you have a Resource Board. Can you talk a bit about how you're organized? And I know that you, Allison, are like the engine behind this organization, but you have a lot of volunteers that work with you, is that correct?
Yes, we do. I'm the employee. I'm, you know, the chief cook and bottle washer. I'm the one you usually see out on the street. And then behind us, we have 56 Resource Board members. Most groups of our age usually disband their Resource Board in the fourth or fifth year. We've chosen not to do that. We have about half of them, about 25 of them are still very active. Others come and go as we ask them to. The Resource Board voted recently to meet as needed instead of every month or every other month, and we've been doing that now. We were doing it for about a year now. It's official that we're meeting as needed because we know a lot of the resources now that we didn't before. So we're doing more mini brainstormings like we did with Larry and Marcy's Place. That gives clients an opportunity to experience firsthand what a resource, resourcing session can look like, and it can involve some people who might be on their team, or people who love their business or love them, and some of our Resource Board members, and that helps them start to build out a management team and see what that looks like. We also have a Board of Directors. We have six people on our Board of Directors right now who represent our, our whole service area, which ranges from Asio and Omsville all the way up to Marion Forks.
So talk on the Resource Board, what kinds of skill sets are represented by those 56 people?
Oh, you know, I love this.
Just give a smattering of examples.
When, when the Resource Board members are selected, at least initially, they were selected for connections and interest in economic development. And honestly, any group of people, all of us here in this room, could figure out together enough resources for a business to do well. So what we're looking for are people who will be, are willing to brainstorm, who are willing to share their connections. We have people on there with marketing expertise. We have some with financial expertise, banking background, real estate. We have a few people involved in real estate. Many of them are small business owners themselves, some work in government. It's a, it's a real smattering and representation of people. Some are retired, some are, I think our youngest person is about 30, and our oldest is 81.
Very good. So you just mentioned the geographic scope.
Mm-hmm.
Omsville, Asio, all the way out to Marion Forks. That's in your report. So where do you focus geographically? Where do you find the most business, or the most need, or the most activity?
Where we find the most business and where we see the most need don't always correspond. We, this is client-driven, so I don't walk around town and poke my head in the door and say, boy, it looks like you need some help. We want people to ask for help, and that's why we work with the chambers and we work with a number of other organizations to help get the word out. So the number one city where we've seen the most client involvement is Staton. That's not surprising because it has the largest population. The second is Mill City. And I would say the reason for that, and we've had, I haven't added the last couple of people in there. It was 52 a couple of months ago, 53 or 54 people from Mill City of that 351 number that we have. And I think there was a lot of pent-up demand in Mill City, and it's the largest community in the Upper Canyon area, and there are a lot of folks there who are chronically underemployed, especially women, who are really itching to get something going.
And so the last question I have is kind of stepping even farther back in terms of, at least this is my perception, that one of the reasons why there was a large need for this type of organization, and also why the focus is on microenterprise and small business, is because the economy has shifted over the past 20, 30 years from one that has been driven by timber mills, which went away, and now there is an economic gap, I guess, for want of a better term, in the canyon in terms of what people can do. And so with you coming in and helping people envision what is possible for people living in the canyon, to be able to live and work in the canyon and not live in the canyon and have to commute into Salem, or commute into a larger place to join the workforce, that that, I mean, it's part of the grand scheme, I guess, about why you exist. So can you talk a bit about that? Is my perception correct? Are there, what are you seeing as kind of the economic needs and that, and that transition that people are making in the canyon from being communities that were primarily timber-dependent?
These are, this is a great question. A lot of timber jobs were lost, not just when Opal Creek, the 13,000 acres from Opal Creek was withdrawn from timberland, but a lot of people in the Upper Canyon especially relied on, you know, really well-paying, essentially it's often blue-collar jobs. They were great jobs to have, and they've disappeared. So the first layer that we've worked on in the last five years is helping people start small businesses. We see that as the way for people to create a job for themselves, help retain the identity of the hometowns they live in. If you think about any small community that you know of, what really makes it sing are those, those small community businesses that you see. So our emphasis has been on helping people do that. One of the things we have noticed, and one of the reasons that we're looking for, another economic development project that we can do region-wide as a layer on what we're already doing, is that we can work with individual businesses all day long, and many of them are doing well. But if their primary market happens to be in an area where their customers don't have much money to spend, then they're limited on how much growth and income they can create. So we're expecting that we'll launch a larger economic development initiative in the next 12 months. We are working, we're going to be working with the Business Retention and Expansion Program that Segcor is doing. They're launching in Staton actually in the middle of July. Kelly is organizing that down in Staton. We'll be part of that steering committee. We'll be doing that, and we routinely have clients going to travel Salem and, and other places to leverage their opportunities. But what we're looking for are other options that might be available to people who have not wanted to start a business, but might like to get involved in another program. So one of the things that we're looking at is Wealth Works Northwest. This is a new initiative that's being brought by Rural Development Initiatives. It's a very competitive process. We're actually applying for it on June 24th. And this, in this process, you look at the resources you have in your community, and you look at consumer demand for what you might have, and then you create a value chain all the way from the product, whatever that happens to be, to delivering it to the customer. So you need people who can create the product and package the product and distribute the product. So we're looking right now at two value chains. One on forest products and specialty forest products like moss and twigs and boughs and things like that that are harvested out of the forest, which will help reduce the fuel that's in the forest right now and create some opportunities for people. And the other one is tourism that we're looking at. So that's one of the projects that we're looking at. There are a couple of others as well, and it's too soon to say what we'll land on if we don't, if we aren't selected, if we're not one of the five communities in Oregon that are selected for this. We already have a Plan B and C in place so that we can do another community-wide initiative that has all of us thinking together, looking at our assets, and seeing what else is it that we can do. And we have, we have lots of stuff in the woods, and we have hundreds of thousands of cars who drive by on Highway 22. Those are, those are a lot of things to work with there. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Okay.
Questions? Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Allison, and Larry, and Kelly. It's good to see you. Just the, talk a little bit about the, the Kiva Zip Trustee Loan Program that you mentioned as an upcoming project initiative.
Great. In fact, we just did a press release about that. One of our clients is our publicist, and you'll see it in, you'll think you'll see it locally in the next couple of weeks. Kiva, Kiva's an organization that has been doing microlending around the world for a number of years. I think they started in 2005. In 2003, they launched a program through, and created a nonprofit in San Francisco called Kiva Zip. And this is a zero percent crowdfunded loan program. And the way it works is that an organization like ours chooses to become a trustee. Our role is to help identify entrepreneurs who might need money, capital, especially people who may not want to or cannot go through traditional lending avenues. It focuses not as much on financial metrics as it does on things like character, reputation, connections, things along those lines. Those are the first screen. It's important that the trustee be able to screen people well because if we're recommending people as credible borrowers, we want to make sure that people who are loaning them money will get their money paid back. So the minimum loan that somebody can do is for $5. A Kiva Zip entrepreneur would need to reach out to at least 15 people in their network or in our network to loan them $5 or more, and then the rest of the money is raised throughout the Kiva Zip network. What's happening, we wanted to see how this was working in Oregon. It came to Oregon last June. We wanted to see how this was working in Oregon before we decided to come on as a trustee. We've wanted to do something with microlending for a while, but we don't have the capacity in our organization to handle a lot of funds in and out. What this does is let people locally invest in a company they believe in. For example, let's say Larry needed to buy new equipment for his business, needed some, you know, five new hospital beds and wanted to borrow, I don't know how much they cost, $5,000. That's, that's the maximum you can buy the first time around. Well, I could say, well, I'm going to loan Larry 20 bucks, and Kelly might say a loan of 15. Commissioner Brentano might loan 100, and Commissioner Carlson, I'm just, I just think you might.
15.
Because you live in Sublimity, okay.
Larry, I would, yeah.
Commissioner Carlson, you know, might loan 25, and pretty soon. And the money is not released until it's fully funded. So what ends up happening is there are a whole bunch of local people literally invested in businesses. The payback term is between six and 24 months. We'll hold information sessions about this as we get closer to launching. Our first step is creating an endorsement committee, so our board isn't the one who has to make decisions. I will be sitting on the same side of the table as the client, so I'm not going to be making decisions, thumbs up or thumbs down. I will be helping people prepare to apply for these loans. When it's launched, we can do it up to, we can recommend up to three after we've had 10 repayments. We can add some more people. Eventually, the dollar amount that can be borrowed goes up to 25,000, I think even 50,000. So we'll see how this works. It won't work if we don't pick the right kinds of entrepreneurs to begin with because it really all relies on reputation and character.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Well, yes, Kelly, thanks for coming in, and thanks for coaxing a couple of my favorites down the hill with you. Nice to see you all.
Just one last comment. I would probably loan it to Larry. I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if I would.
Yeah, where are you pointing?
Never mind.
I hear you. Character counts, I know. All right, again, thank you.
Great, thank you.
You need to go.
We can take a, we have to recess till 9:30 anyway because we can start.
All right. All right, then we will. We have a public hearing scheduled for 9:30, and we'll resume then.
Yeah.
It's 9:30 on June 11th, 2014, and we have scheduled a Public Works Hearing, Public Hearing, excuse me, to consider amendment to the Marion County Conference of Plan amending Salem-Kaiser Urban Growth Boundary for land at Kaiser Rapids Park. Brandon Reich is here, and we're going to have a very simple action, I think, continue for the June 25th, but would you explain real quickly what this is and, and then where we go from here?
I sure will. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division. The City of Kaiser is proposing to expand the Salem-Kaiser Urban Growth Boundary by approximately 58 acres for park land at Kaiser Rapids Park. 38 acres of land is inside the city limits of Kaiser, but outside the urban growth boundary. 20 acres of land is both outside the city limits and outside the urban growth boundary. Once inside the UGB, the city intends to begin a master planning process to identify future uses at the park. The city has held two public hearings on this proposal, one before the city's Planning Commission and one before City Council. On May 5th, 2014, after the City Council, Kaiser City Council, took testimony from interested persons, the council approved the proposal. The City of Salem is also considering the UGB amendment. On June 9th, Salem held a public hearing and took testimony on the proposal. Salem City Council subsequently approved the proposal and is scheduled to concur in the amendments by ordinance. On May 7th, 2014, the county adopted a resolution to initiate consideration of the amendment and schedule a public hearing for today. The county must review the proposal because it affects rural land that will be brought into the UGB, and it coordinates the population forecast for Kaiser for the year 2032. With Adam available for any questions you may have.
Brendan, really appreciate the willingness of Nate Brown and City of Kaiser to continue this for a couple of weeks. We have a funeral, and Commissioner Cameron has already left for it, and as soon as this is over, I'll be leaving for it, and so, and I don't think it's going to be a very lengthy hearing, but we can do that two weeks from now.
Yes.
So I would go ahead and make the motion that the Board continue this public hearing, which is for the purpose of considering an amendment to the Marion County Conference of Plan, which amends the Salem-Kaiser Urban Growth Boundary for land at Kaiser Rapids Park.
All right, I'll second the motion. If anybody would like to input, there's certainly more time to, to reach the Board's office, and the reset, or the continuation will be June 25th at 9:30 if that wasn't set. Second further discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, Nate and Brandon. All right, the last thing I have to do this morning is read the places that the two or more Commissioners will be together in the next week. The first is this afternoon, 3:30 to 5:00 Economic Development Advisory Board, and that'll be in the Commissioners' Boardroom, 550, Fifth Floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At 4 o'clock to 6:30, Salem River Crossing Project Open House, B. Courthouse Square, here in this Senator Hearing Room on the first floor, again, 555 Court Street Northeast, Salem. And again, that's 4 to 6:30. Thursday, 7:30 to 9:00, Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. Road North in Kaiser. And that's followed at 10:00 to 11:00 with annual Service District Meetings, Present and Approve Budget, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. Then that's followed at 11:00 to 1:00, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officers' Meeting, Executive Session if needed pursuant to ORS 1926602A, B, F, and I. Again, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, Courthouse Square. Friday, the 13th, 11:30 to 1:00, Marion County State of the County Presentation to the Staton Chamber. That'll be at the Silverton Hospital Family Birthing Center, 2nd Floor, 342 Fairview Street in Silverton. That just happens to be the Brentano Room, but I just don't know why I have to mention that. 6:16 Monday, 9:00 to 10:00 Management Update, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. Monday, another executive session, 10:15 to 10:45 pursuant to ORS 1926602D, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor. The 17th, 5:30 to 8:00, the PG Officers and Directors Event at Zenith Vineyards, 7657 Xena Road in Salem. Next Wednesday at 9:00, our normal time, 9:00 to 1:00, Board Sessions, Senator Hearing Room, 4th Floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. And Wednesday, the 18th, 1:00 to 4:00, Reentry Job Barrier Meeting at the Salem Chamber of Commerce, 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. So that's all we have this morning. Nobody really to talk to, or I'd make up something. Wonderful. Be back. I hope Kevin was introduced. I wanted to properly on his first meeting. That was a little atypical, but I hope you enjoyed it, and I am certainly looking forward to working with him the next few years. Anything else from anyone here? Well, then I will call the meeting adjourned if it wasn't...